From grade six to twelve and the word languages K to twelve. Then we, yeah, I think we are applauding. Yeah, we are a small crowd, so we can do that, right? Then we do have a new principal. He's not here because I requested that principals cannot be here. So thank you to the chair and vice chair that the principals can be home. So that is Dr. Matthew Stahl, who is not here. So welcome to the new team and I hope I'm not forgetting anybody there. So with that, with that note, we are going to go over. As you can see, we have a healthy agenda, but I want to make sure that we cover everything. So if we go to the next slide. Yep, to the next slide. This is our community. We do have seven schools, 6,275 students and more actually, because this attendance was taken on Friday. So on Saturday, we have more students enroll. We have approximately 1,200 staff members and 60-plus languages are spoken in our high school, but also in our K to eight school. So I want to acknowledge that it's not just happening at high school. It's everywhere in the hallways. So we embrace the diversity of our staff, students, the ethnicity and linguistic and cultural backgrounds. It is just amazing to be in the hallways and listen all these amazing languages. I know our schools. We have our wild team. As you can see that we have all our principals and we do have new staff members on the schools. This information was sent to parents and also to the district to make sure that we welcome our new APs. As we know, thanks to school committee for your vote, we were able to hire one new, an additional assistant principal for the schools K to eight, which is helping us to create a small learning communities where we can customize the work with the families and at the same time to create a small learning communities for the teachers and the students. So thank you very much for doing that. Now we are going to something that happened this year and we are very happy with the accomplishments of last year. We were able to create a program studies thanks to the help of every single teacher, program director, directors and assistant superintendent at Emily Spina for leading this work with a program studies that has a pacing guide, a program studies. You had the curriculum, you have access to that. And one thing that we have been able to accomplish is that in all our K to eight schools, we offer the same course selections. We use the same curriculum in math literacy SEL and we are going to pilot science and history. Thanks again to school committee members because we're finally having a district that we have curriculum in every single subject. We have curriculum maps that is across the district, pacing guides, same assessments and similar activities. The assessments that we are working on are based on the student growth. So we don't compare student to student. It's the student by themselves. How do the students are doing so we can monitor the growth? Time on learning. We, all our schools have very similar time on learning for the minutes per subject. So if you want to learn more about it, please go to the program studies and just go over and review all the amazing work that our teachers, administrators did together. Academic highlights. Before the end of school year on June 12th during school committee, I went over this amazing growth in our students from the school, from K to eight. And we have a district annual growth on reading and we achieved a 23% increase in literacy. Kindergarten, we saw a 53% at grade level, above grade level in reading. In math, in grades five to K to five, we had a 7% increase at or above grade level. In math, in grade six to eight, we have 11% increase at or above grade level. We had the new curriculum, literacy, math, science, history, social emotional learning. We pilot the honors pathway, which we are going to full implement in grade six to eight and we started piloting in grades five. Summer programs, we, well, you can read them here, so I'm not going to read it to you, but we were so happy to be able to offer nine programs where students were engaged in academics during school year. And one of the things that we are very proud is that we started exploring the outdoors learning model where more, most of our EL students, thanks to our amazing ELA directors and coaches, were able to establish this program where students were outdoors, mainly working in projects and meeting people within the community. So we are very pleased to say that we are going to continue with this model for every single grade level. Other highlights in the summer that we have, we held for adults, two-day leadership retreats for principals and assistant principals, a two-day new educators orientation workshop. Thank you to all of the directors who are here and Emily Spina and Pam for helping us with this work. We had 65 educators at that time. We had more now, but those are the ones who participated at that time. We had a week-long educator symposium. This was the first time that we were able to do this. We had 250, 255 educators sign up and we offered 68 different courses. This is something that is in high demand for next year. So we had to see how we are going to be able to continue with this amazing work. We have special education training and that is with LIPS. 16 educators participated with a new curriculum that we're looking at autism competences for endorsement and that is 20 educators. And I had the privilege in actually working with the school-based assistant, administrative assistants, training them on how to use Google Suite. Another big accomplishment, and this is thanks to the hard work of our former director of Title One, Victoria Mulkern, who left us, but we have amazing work with Martha now. Yes. So as you can see through this survey, there were 471 responses to this survey that she did. And you can see the percentages. One of the things that I want to highlight is the 96% where praised teachers for their work with students and caregivers. I will give them 100%, 110%, but this is coming from parents. So great job, everybody. And as you can see, families feel welcome. 94% of them feel like when they enter that doors, the buildings, they just feel like you are there and just welcome to help them. So this is the report from the families. 92% say that their school, they feel safe for the students, safe to learn. So this is once again the hard work of principals, assistant principals and all the educators in the buildings. So thank you so much. Many people ask, you know, where's the money going? And I have to say that it goes to education, goes to curriculum, but also we have amazing facilities. Many people ask why we didn't close school. The data was really, really hot and it's because we are so thankful that we have AC in every single building. So therefore we were able to continue with the classes. This is the work that has been led by Eric Rubin and also Tony Mertz to make sure that every single school was working properly and ready for our students. This doesn't happen by magic and a magical thing. This happened with a lot of work from people with custodians were there and some of them didn't have AC when they were working this summer because they wanted to make sure our buildings were going to be ready. So thank you for that. You can see that we invested a lot of money on improving ventilation equipment in all schools, internet. We still working on this, but actually Anthony Rodriguez has done an outstanding work with Khan and his team to make sure that our system is going to be working in a more efficient way. We have a new PA and bell system. So if you don't hear some of the bells, I believe BB has some kind of bell, something that is amazing what you can do with the PA system. Freeway, as you know, it was offline. It's amazing what they did in the entire building with the main lobby. But at the same time, there was some tender love and care where they painted all the classrooms and tried to make sure that it looked amazing. So if you had the opportunity to go to Freeway, it's a new school. It's amazing. ELC, again, it was another school that was offline during the summer. They have to replace the boiler and generator. So sometimes you don't see it like outside because this happens in the heart of the school in the basement. Parking improvements and parents, if you're hearing me, please just follow the directions of how to keep the traffic moving, please. There was also tendered love and care in there. Salemwood, we have a new carpet in the auditorium and new units in the vent units in the classrooms. BB has a beautiful new fence. It's safe for students to be there and to have fun. Auditoriums, the lights, the lighting is working. If not, principals will let us know. Kitchen equipment in every single school except at ELC. That would be our next layer work. Then we are going to move to multiple events. As you can see in this picture, there are a lot of adults because we spend a lot of time and students haven't been able to sign or the opt-out for social media. So therefore you see adults instead of students. And if you see students in here, it's because we have permission from the parents. It was a great first day of school and it was nice to see all of you with your T-shirts. We can't wait to see you wearing them. And I see a lot of you on Friday wearing it. So a safety overview training, there is going to be one for parents or anybody who wants to join us. It's going to happen September 27th at 6:00 PM at Jenkins Auditorium. And this is an overview. It's not going to be the training that staff receives. It's more for the parents to be, and caregivers to understand what happens when the police officers come to give us the training. So I want to thank Chief Cronin and his team for doing this amazing work with us. We are talking about transformative and intentional practices and it's because this year we want to focus more into whatever we are doing, how do we measure the growth and also be intentional about changing practices if they're not working. And we want to make sure that we are going to capture the data. We, I know we always keep you busy with data. No, this time, October, it will be the day for. But we want to make sure that whatever we are doing is actually working for the students and the families. And if it's not, how do we actually turn around, reflect in the practices that we have and being able to improve them instead of letting a whole year go by without making changes? So on that lens, for the five, for the last three years included this one, we are not changing the focus of the instructional focus of the district. We continue committed to literacy, numeracy and to reduce chronic absenteeism. One of the only changes that we are going to make is the focus on writing because now that students can read, we noticed that their writing is need some work. We would say a lot of work because in the past years, computers, everybody's typing that we want to make sure they can still have five model skills of writing and putting their thoughts on paper. So you are going to hear more about what we are going to be doing with writing. Our instructional framework has not changed. You see the five core principles. We are just going to get deeper into the practice. You can also see that we still are working with Unbound Glean, Unbound Ed. We were able to send a lot of the new principals and also directors to a retreat with Unbound Ed to make sure that we understand what is the grade level engaging and affirming and meaning for education. This is the work that we will continue doing. We want to make sure students are getting grade level education following the standards. As we know, Molden is a standard-based district following math course for the high school. Our goals have not changed either. So just that we are going to get deeper with goal one, goal three and goal four. We are in the process of starting the conversations with the public about our strategic planning. So you are going to hear more about this, but we are going to get deeper into three goals instead of six. Even though they all count, we work on all of them, but we want to make sure we get deeper into goal one, three and four. All the work that we have been doing in the district is not just something that we go and say, oh, by the way, let's create something new. This has been very strategic, very intentional about every single thing that we do in the school, in our practices. Any interventions, anything that we do actually goes through a process framed by this element. And we want to make sure that anything that we do, we have an impact on students, teachers and the content. And we are very intentional about that. So everything that happens in the classrooms with the new curriculum, we're working with Glean, we're working with assignments, working with the program stuff. Everything that we do actually goes through this process because we just don't go home and say, oh, by the way, I thought about this. Great idea. Let me try this, this moment, this month, and that's it. So you will see the continuity of a lot of the strategies because everything that we had to do has to have an impact on the students and also support our educators to continue with the work. We have been very lucky to have extra grants. We have a lot of grants, but when they go away, we had to build the capacity among our schools to continue the work. We are going to pay more attention, intentional focus on multilingual education. That is the reason why we hire an assistant superintendent to do this work and that is to focus on the curriculum, instruction practices and also how to get more caregivers and families involved in this education of children and also to provide ESL classes for families. We are working very closely with the city trying to make sure that we are going to do, run ESL classes for the entire district and in the city. There are four pillars that we are going to be working on. Diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And this is going to start, we are going to start some, having some meetings in the evening and trying to get the community back into these conversations about our district. What does it look like and how do we bring people together to make sure that we embrace our students and our educators too. And once again, this work is going to be led by Ellen Kelleher Rojas. It wasn't me. Okay. There was just a noise. It seemed like something fell for the audience. Okay, I'm going to continue. I think we're okay. Yeah. Are we okay? I don't know. Okay. So when I say we are going to be more intentional, we are also more intentional about how we are going to support schools. And so far, the model that we had is an assistant superintendent has been assigned to each school where it's one phone call away. Principals call, one person and things have to be done within less than six hours. Sometimes it's less than an hour. We want to make sure that we customize the services for our schools so principals can focus on the instruction and safety of the students. So cross-functional teams. It is a concept that we have worked before and we are going to start this year here. And that is when we have different teams and we can go to the next picture. I think that would be great. The traditional teams is that everybody has the departments. Now, the representative from each department from central office, we'll come together and make a cross-functional team. Therefore, we are going to have members from a special ed, from multilingual education. We are going to have them from academics and they're going to be working with the assistant superintendent to go to the schools to meet with the principals and their teams and say, how can we support you? What are the areas of growth? Because sometimes conversations happen individually, like they call ELA department or they call special ed. We want to make sure that we are going to all get together with the principals and work together with program, program of practice. So you can see we have the BB team, ELC, Freeway, Forestdale, Linden, the high school, Salemwood and also in central office. We want to make sure that when the teams come together, they're going to be looking at data and we are there to serve and support school leaders and the teachers and the educators as well as anybody in the building who needs our support and also for parents. So these are going to be the cross-functional teams because we have experts from every single department just sitting with the principals and the principals will be leading the conversations. And enrollment. We have 6,275 students. Today was 6,302, but I didn't put it in there because this was taken on Saturday. This information actually, if people want to see it, I love it because it tells you the enrollment per grade level, per school. So you can see that from kindergarten, or actually from pre-kindergarten all the way to grade 13. We do have grade 13 for the students who are going to stay over age. So this is actually a very good plan to look at if families want to know how the enrollment is going to the schools. And just to let you know that this report is going to be available for families tomorrow. We are going to start sending it to everybody and caregivers. Then there is the historical district enrollment. So you can see that last year, as of September 12th, 2022, our enrollment was 6,337. And on September 7th, 2023, it was 6,275. And I just mentioned that there are a little bit more now. So we are a little bit know that law, but we are enrolling students as fast as we can. So that is the comparison on the district. The question is always what happened before COVID? Because we're still talking about before COVID. So in the year 2018, 2019, the district ended with an enrollment of 6,464. Last year, we ended the year with 6,509 students. So we know that our numbers will continue going up. And once again, the formula is to look at the district enrollment data and you can see what school is getting a high enrollment. It's a good formula to see for whoever wants to, always interested on that. All right, so we go to staffing. And this is the best part. I know we still have some vacancies, but I have to say that we have a school that is 100% staff and we are 96 to 100% staff schools. We don't have that many, many vacancies. So please, please, we still have some vacancies, but if you can, we can continue recruiting. But I have to say the principals and assistant principals and their hiring teams who worked so hard this summer, that tried to recruit as many teachers as possible. I want to thank the caregivers, the parents and other educators who share our positions, open positions. And thanks to them, we have been able to do this work. We are so proud of the work that everybody's doing. So thank you for doing that because we know that if the schools are staff, fully staff and everybody comes every day, things will move easy, very fast and easy. All right. Information for families and caregivers. This is, there are links in here, so I want to make sure that people go to the open house and caregivers teacher conference link. We had them, some of them already. Caregivers resource guide. We upgraded that information. So you should be able to get some information for housing, where to get food, for health services. We do have the program studies. We have the student family handbook, the code of conduct. We still use the one from last year. We're going to present a new version very soon. And we had the harassment policy, they see something, say something. So we are going to post the, we are going to have the posters ready next week for schools so they can, students know that if something's going on, they can make a phone call and principals get the call just to make sure that there's a follow-up if somebody's saying that they are being bullied or there's harassment. We do have a video, but I don't know if we have. We are going to feature schools, every school different meeting. So this is BB. So I don't know if it will work. And this is done by.
Hi, and welcome to the BB school. I'm Dr. Murphy and we are so looking forward to having a great start to our new year. This year, we're all about celebrating student and staff successes and we're looking to highlight them, so stay tuned.
Hi, I'm Kate Greco and I'm the assistant principal for kindergarten to second grade here at BB this year. And we are so excited to have all of our students back in the building. We will be making sure to highlight all the successes of attendance here on our, we are so happy you are here board, where all student attendance will be recognized for the great successes and having all students here on time every day. And especially you, Bruce, make sure you get to class on time.
Good afternoon, welcome to the BB school. I am Kevin Kilbride, the assistant principal of the five to eight grades. I'm here to talk today a little bit about the PBIS program that we have here at the BB school. You saw the, above us, the PBIS and we talk about being accepting, being responsible and being kind. And it accentuates the positive behaviors of our students. The assistant principals will send home cards also to recognize student behavior. And we feel like it's really made a difference in our building.
Welcome. My name's Victoria Vindol. I'm assistant principal for grades three, four and five at BB. We're really proud of our facilities, especially our back playground. In addition to our ADA certified playset, we have our new fence back here with support of our custodians and facility managers. Things are looking great for students at the start of the year.
Thank you, and I want to thank Jim Valenti for doing this work. And yes, every meeting, we are going to feature different schools. So I just want to say thank you so much and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Let's take some questions. Any questions of the members? Any questions? Ms. Batafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question. And geez, is there any chance under the enrollment data? I get a lot of phone calls from parents during kindergarten enrollment or just enrolling and wanting to know, why doesn't my child get into a certain school? So I think it'd be really great if we could highlight the amount of seats open at particular schools to understand the space or the lack thereof maybe at certain schools. Because I know that's, that's a big concern as we try to be more, you know, neighborhood schools. But you know, reality is some of our schools are smaller than others and only see a certain amount of students. So I think it would be really great if we could highlight, you know, the seating capacity when we talk about enrollment. That's really all I had. I just wanted to say fantastic job on all of the upgrades to the facilities this summer. I was able to tour with the superintendent, different schools to see the work that was put in. And I just want to give a huge shout out to Eric Rubin and his team because what they accomplished in realistically six weeks, some with schools being open, some with them not being open. But when I walked in, there's guys putting boilers in. There's landscaping happening, just it's, it's constant. So even though our students may be home with us, we're still 100% going throughout the summer. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, let's go to the budget subcommittee. Let's turn it over to Ms. Batafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're just rolling through everything today. So as the interim chair to the budget subcommittee, we met on September 6th to discuss the substitute nurses' daily salaries. Up until our meeting, our current rate for our school nurse substitutes was $140 a day. And we struggled to really get nurses to, to come in and work at that rate, especially when a lot of our surrounding communities were double what we were paying. On top of that, because we couldn't get substitute nurses, we'd often go out to staffing agencies. And the staffing agencies were charging us a rate upwards of $455 a day. So double what a lot of our surrounding cities were actually paying. So it only made sense that to be able to make sure that we have nurses in every single chair when somebody happens to be out sick, needs a day off, whatever it may be. So the subcommittee voted favorably to increase the, and you'll see this when we get down into motions and resolutions, the daily substitute rate to $240 per day. And that is actually the highest of all of our surrounding towns with the exception of Lynn. They beat us by $10 a day. But otherwise, we are, we should not have issues now going forward, so.
Very good. Any questions? Hearing none. Let's go to motions or resolutions. So the aforementioned substitute nurses compensation. So you want to make that motion?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we increase the daily substitute nurse rate to $240 per day.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Drummy. Questions on that? Any questions? Let's go to Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, stand by. Here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick clarification. What are we increasing it from?
Absolutely. So we were paying $140 per day for substitute nurses. And like I said, if we had to go out to a staffing agency, which we did a lot of the times, we were paying upwards of $455 a day. So in speaking with our finance director, this is actually a cost savings for us to increase the daily rate. So we're not paying that, that outsourcing agency rate.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. That was very elaborative and you're right. It does sound like we're saving a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Anyone else? Hearing none. We have the motion. It's been seconded. It's called a roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McAfee?
Yes.
Ms. Batafor?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yes.
May I question?
Yes, that carries unanimously. Substitute teachers' compensation. Ms. Batafor or Ms. Rose Ziber? Want to stop?
I'll take it over. So I think, you know, Ms. Rose Ziber and myself have discussed what we've really seen, really from our parents actually saying, hey, our kids don't have teachers in the classroom. When someone needs a day off, how come we can't get somebody behind a desk or in front of a classroom? So I think it's only necessary that we take a look at our substitute. So, I think it's only necessary that we take a look at our substitute teacher compensation. It hasn't been looked at since 2018. So, I would like to make a motion to send this to Budget Subcommittee for discussion.
Okay, seconded by you, Ms. Rose Ziber, okay. Any questions on that, everyone? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that will be referred to budget. District cell phone policy, Ms. Batafora?
Again, this is really just more of housekeeping, a couple of things. So, the district cell phone policy, what we have in our handbook doesn't quite align up with what's actually happening in the schools. So, I just wanted to get this sent down to policy and procedures. So, we have a formal policy where parents and students aren't concerned about whether or not technology is allowed in the classroom or how it gets to school.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Any questions? Let's go to Mr. McCarthy. Standby. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent, as of right now, what is currently the, the cell phone policy for, for our students within the classrooms and in the individual schools? I know there's probably one for the entire district, so what is that?
So, the policy, the policy states that teachers are going to ask students to put their phones away, that we don't see it. But what is in practice, especially the K-28, and it's something that DESI is endorsing, is to collect the phones from students and put it in what we call the hotel phone cells. So, that is something that we're going to revise the policy from K-28. We adopted the policy that was developed at the high school. Once again, the policy states that we are going to just give the students a warning to put their phones away.
Okay, so, so do they have like the, because at the school that I work at, they have like these pockets that you, that you actually hang on the doors or on a wall somewhere, and they have to have a certain like timeframe of when they can, you know, actually have them. They're, they're, they're going to be in the pockets from this time to this time. And then they can, when they have a break, they can use their phones again, particularly within, you know, the middle school levels and the high school levels. So, is that, that's currently what's being done?
It is happening in the K-28, but because it's not in the policy that we actually can collect the phone of the students and put it in this, we have little box that looks like a hotel, so they call the cell hotel, where they put them and they lock them. We want to make sure that that is going to make it to the policy so it is distinctive between K-28s. And then the high school will continue probably with the warning, put your phones away.
Has it been a positive impact? Have, have the, you know, building administrators, have they said that has had a positive impact, learning for the kids?
Actually, these requests is coming from the K-28 principals. And we invested some money, and once again, DESI is endorsing this to make sure that the technology is not going to be a distraction for students in K-28s. And our schools, all our schools have what we call the phone hotels. But we would like to have it as a policy. So, when students come into the K-28s, the phones will be secured in a secure location, that the teacher's the only one who can open it, and it's a good practice that they have. We don't see that at the hotel, sorry. We don't see that happening at the high school where we want more students to learn more, to be more independent.
Excellent, yeah, so hopefully, we can, you know, collect some data from that and, and see what the, you know, the increase on learning is when, you know, kids probably want to be on their phones more than actually learning in the classrooms. But hopefully, you can, you know, provide us with some data after that, you know, begins.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that'll be referred. Now, let's take a look at the student absence policy.
So, same thing, Mr. Chair. Had some questions, I think mainly from parents really coming out of, I don't want to say coming out of COVID because of course, COVID is still here, but really questions around policies, absence policies. Of course, we a lot of times tell parents to keep, you know, your children home if they're sick. But also, our policy does say an excused absence needs to have a doctor's note. So, I, I think there's a fine line where parents are wondering, well, I'm trying to do the right thing, keeping my child home, but it's not an excused absence unless I see a doctor. So, I'd like to refer this to, to policy so we can get a better handle around it.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Any questions, everyone? Mr. Bernard?
Yeah, just a quick one, I mean, and I know this will probably be discussed in policy because I'm not on that, I just want to go in. Is it going to be a point of like, if someone goes and pulls their kid for a day, but then if they decide he goes on to two or three, that at that point, you go and you ask for the doctor's note, or is it, is that?
So, that's essentially what we're looking to talk about in policy. What, you know, and, and I'm hoping as we get into policy, we'll have our Director of Nursing there, who'll be able to, who's, you know, been up to date with all the guidelines from the CDC in regards to COVID protocols. But really, I think that's a big question that parents are asking, like, okay, my child might not have a fever today, but they have a cough, and I don't want them to spread germs. But is that excused because we didn't see a doctor? So, there's just, you know, there's some gray area in there.
Right, clearing up the gray area, making sure that, you know, that they have a clear pathway to follow. Kid's got a cough or slight fever, keep him home. Goes on for a second day, they call in and say, get us a doctor's note, please. Got it. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Anybody else, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Final item in motions and resolutions, resolution in support of the Thrive Act. Ms. Batafora?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do apologize, as I was working on this and sent it off to our clerk, that I did not reach out to members to co-sponsor this. So, I really hope that a vote of approval is, is your co-sponsoring. But as a parent, I see my own children stressed out over MCAS testing, over any testing, I mean, nobody likes to test. But I think what it really comes down to is putting a level of pressure, not only on our students, but on our educators to administer a test that is so dysfunctional. And, and that's my own opinion. But it really doesn't serve our students. We have many that leave school and go to work and don't get home until 11, 12 o'clock at night and don't have the time to sit down and, and test, I mean, to study for this. So, I, I think it's really important that we get behind this legislation that hopefully passes so we can get rid of this outdated form of standardized testing and, and look for a better way for us to see where our students are. So, I, may I read the resolution in for the?
Please.
So, whereas, access to a high-quality, publicly-funded education is a guaranteed right written into the Massachusetts Constitution. And whereas, the Massachusetts State Legislature is considering passage of H. 495/ S. 246, an act empowering students in schools to thrive, also known as the Thrive Act. And whereas, the Thrive Act would end the use of MCAS scores as a graduation requirement. And whereas, the Thrive Act would establish a new process for identifying and supporting schools designated as in need of comprehensive support and improvement. And whereas, the use of MCAS scores as a graduation requirement has not catalyzed the closing of opportunity gaps in Massachusetts. And the test can be a barrier to graduation for students who do not perform well on standardized tests despite their understanding of a subject. And whereas, the Thrive Act would establish a modified graduation requirement based on coursework rather than high-stakes standardized testing and implement a new comprehensive support and improvement system designed to empower local communities to give students the tools and resources they need to succeed. And whereas, the Thrive Act would establish a commission to study and make recommendations for a more authentic and accurate system for assessing students, schools, and school districts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Malden School Committee supports H. 495/ S. 246, an act empowering students in schools to thrive, also known as the Thrive Act, and urges the state legislature to pass the Thrive Act, ending the use of MCAS tests as a graduation requirement and for purposes of placing school districts or individual schools into state receivership.
Okay, motion by Ms. Batafora, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Any questions, queries, qualms, concerns? Mr. Bernard?
I just want to go in, thank you, I just want to go and speak that I am going to go and vote for this. I think this is important, I think that we've got, there's a lot of students out there that certainly go and have a lot of anxiety when it comes to testing. And I think that this will, they would, it would behoove them, and it'd be better for their educational experience. And a lot of them are good students that are going to go and succeed. And to hold them back from graduating because of it, they're not a good test taker, it's just, it's not fair, and it's not right. I think that it affects a lot of our students that are on IEPs. I think it affects some of our English language learner students, and we do everything in our power. I think it affects our faculty and our staffing here because there's always this level of stress, especially over the last few years with the technology and with COVID and having to go in and have the concern about if this drops out in the middle of while we're doing our testing, we have to get this testing done because we don't want to go and get, have an issue with, with DESI. Being able to go and restructure this somehow and to go and take that pressure off of, I think the faculty and make them better teachers. I think this will go and make our students not sweat so much about going and passing a test to graduate. And there's one more thing that I do want to go and bring up that's part of this, which is DESI tends to go and use receiver set, receivership as a, as a hammer to go and say, you need to go and behave and make sure that you've got your kids taking this test. And I think that that is exceedingly unfair. It doesn't give a pathway for a district to get out or to go and have any kind of community input as to how we fix the system or to go and provide any kind of funding to go and help a district get out of that receivership. So, that's one part that is also part of this. And I think that is very important to go and actually go and keep in the back of our brains that if something happened, we went into receivership, it's very, very difficult to get out. And the three municipalities that are currently in receivership have been in receivership for a very long time and still have no pathway to get out. And there's no community involvement, and it's strictly on DESI's, and it's what they wanted to go and throw Boston into. And I do not want to see Malden go down that same path, ever. So, I rise in support of this, and I just hope that the rest of my committee members will go and vote yes as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard, any other questions? If not, let's have the clerk call the roll. Mr. Gray? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I come at this from a completely different direction, and I will not be voting to support this. There are people, children, adults, who do need high-stakes testing, okay? There's a different side to this, there's a different side to the coin. Some people, some children will thrive under systems that have high-stakes testing. As a child growing up, I was always put under pressure. I didn't like it. Plenty of high-stake testing, and I got through it. I had to take high-stake testing to get into Latin school. I didn't think of it at the time, it just happened, I just lived it. To get into the military, I had to take standardized tests. You know, to go into active-duty military, you have to take a written standardized test. To get a driver's license, you have to take a written standardized test. To a doctor, to fly an airplane. Some children are going to need that structure so that when they get on a career path in life where they have to take standardized tests to get out of college, to drive a car, to do whatever, there's got to be some mechanism, some training for that. And at my day job at the law school, we train our graduate students to sit down and grind out a standardized test to become lawyers. If they can't, if some of them can't deal with it or don't have the training or experience growing up, then they're not going to, they're going to fail later in life. And I've faced that a lot of times. I've faced a lot of stress, sometimes I did well, sometimes I didn't. But that's real life. I don't know what the ultimate answer is, but the way this reads to me, it seems like a move towards removing standardized testing. It's, it feels too broad, it feels too open. There's got to be a middle ground somewhere. Sure, there are plenty of kids who don't do well under standardized testing platforms, but there are other children who look at career paths who do well under it. It's stressful for 100% of the children, no doubt. But it does work for some children. It worked for me. I'll say once again, I didn't like it, but look where I ended up, a career path. Just one last note, in my day job, working in information technology, nobody will hire me, nobody would hire me if I didn't sit down and grind out standardized tests to get my certifications. And what I went through as a child and a young adult going through it gave me the confidence to sit down for another standardized test so that I could have a career. Just giving you my background where I will, why I will not be voting for it because it feels too broad in scope. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other members wishing to speak? Please.
Thank you. Mr. Gray, if I may, I don't know if you've had a chance to actually read the, read the legislation that's out there, that's before the Education Committee. So, I just want to be clear that what this is talking about is ending high-stakes standardized testing, saying you cannot graduate. We don't want to eliminate standardized testing. Testing is how we find out how well students are doing. We just want them to find a better way, something else to, to put forth that doesn't put such high limitations on our students. So, we're not saying that, you know, we're not going to test you anymore, let's just teach and however, you know, you learn, and here's a diploma. Of course, there has to be ways for us to see where students are. We're just not saying that MCAS is the right way to do it, to say that you must pass this test regardless. I have a special-needs child that couldn't pass this test probably, and therefore would not get their diploma, but is highly, highly intelligent. So, how can we make sure that our kids are able to graduate based on the education we're giving them and not based off of just one single test?
Thank you, anybody else? If not, let's have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yes.
May I question?
Yes, that carries eight to one. We're now at personal privilege. Anybody wishing to address the school committee with points of personal privilege? Mr. Drummy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to welcome everyone back. It's been fun, I missed all your smiling faces, so it's nice to see you here tonight. First off, Ferryway PTO is now online. They have put their, their year's worth of promotions coming up, starting in September. First of all, Thursday is open house at the Ferryway, come and meet your teachers. That's from 5:30 to 7:30. Friday will be ice cream and slush. It's not that cold yet, guys, it's only a buck apiece, come on down. You can do it, they'll be in the outside parking lot, so bring a dollar and come get it. And then, last but not least, on the 28th of the month, the PTO is sponsoring a family fun and raffle from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Ferryway. If you're not doing anything, come on down and have a good time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just some announcements for the Salemwood. There's going to be an open house on Wednesday, September 20th, going from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. It's time for caregivers and parents to go and meet their children's teachers, see the classrooms, hear how they're doing, get any questions answered. Enter through the K-4 lower level plaza. And on the following Tuesday, September 26th, there'll be a Title I overview for families and caregivers, and that'll be at 8:15 on the 26th at the K-4 Cafe. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Bernard? Anyone else? Ms. Rose Zieberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to put out that for the Linden on Wednesday, September 13th, they will have their open house from 6:00 to 7:30. And then Friday, September 15th, is the Linden PTO has their ice cream social from 6:00 until 8:00. And the PTO will actually be hosting also this year their first-ever Tiger Trot fundraiser, which will be from September 25th until October 13th, so you should be looking for information about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the BBE, we have, the BB Fall Festival's gonna be coming up on September 22nd. Please, please go and join the BB PTO Facebook page for more information, they're fantastic out there. I did check Forestale stuff, because we don't have Award V member, and I didn't see anything, but correct me if I'm wrong, Principal Welldie? Okay. So, Forestale's Open House is tomorrow, September 12th, from 5:30 to 7:00, and the PTO is now online. Their website is live at forestalepto.com with a year-long calendar of events. And lastly, keep your ears open, myself, Counselor Linehan in the BB PTO, we're working to put together a fundraiser for those affected by the earthquake in Morocco. Right now, it's kinda BBE, but I think we're looking to kind of push it out citywide amongst all the schools to make sure that we're there supporting all of our families, so be on the lookout for more information.
Very good. We'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Ms. Spatafor, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Spatafor?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Zieberg?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. School Committee will now be in executive session.
Translators, you're all set. Thank you so much for being here this evening.